Vice Chair Tisman.
Good evening, President.
Okay. Commissioner Smith? It's not him as well. Commissioner Smith?
Ah, technical difficulties or user error here.
Uh, Commissioner Kilcup? Did not see her. Okay, Commissioner Crone?
Here.
And Commissioner Murphy, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lambert? No, and Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
Okay, seeing that we have a quorum. And we have a pretty full agenda item, I would like to proceed. To uh, agenda number one first, uh. Are there any public comments? Uh, for in-person attendees for any items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, move on to uh, agenda approval, I move that we approve the October seventh, twenty twenty-four. Agenda, I will have a couple of modifications, I'd like to add. Uh, a climate change presentation to the future agenda list. Uh, so I move that we approve the agenda as amended. Can I get a second?
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, agenda is approved. Let me move into the council liaison report. And the commission recognizes Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, greetings, Commission. Um. So I had two big things to uh, talk about, uh, one is that uh, I believe that this occurred after we last met. Uh, the council has approved a development agreement uh, with uh, Mr. Hambling and his um. Uh, nonprofit organization for the development of a model train museum in downtown. Uh, it will be uh, located or the project is cited to be located uh, on the gravel parking lot, uh, which is at the intersection of King and Snoqualmie Parkway. Uh. And uh, that will uh, cover several uh, lots in size, so it's gonna be quite a sizable development. Uh, and um. Yeah, I'll be happy to take any questions that the uh, commission has about that, but uh. We certainly hope that that will bring in uh, some more tourism dollars into the city, uh, and will be a nice little compliment for um, our train theme that we have downtown. And then uh, the other big thing that we did as a council was uh, we approved the uh, budget for the uh, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennium, and I was just. Trying to finish writing up my notes there on it, so I'm gonna have to uh, kinda go from the hip on it, but um. It is a total budget of over the biennium, a hundred and seventy-four million dollars across all the accounts. That includes forty-four million in the general fund. And then uh, seventy million approximately in capital programs and projects. Uh, one of the things that we'll be doing uh, is uh, adding three new fire positions uh, to increase our fire safety uh, in the city. And uh, let me just open up my book here so I can get the other numbers for relevant things that uh, the commission might be interested in. Let's see, do do do, yes, for um, police. Uh, that is approximately, I had it for both, oh well, that's okay, uh, approximately uh, ten million in police, uh, about. Uh, if I could do my math, around nine million or so for fire and emergencies. Uh, we have around uh, six and a half million in parks and streets, about uh, three million-ish for community development. And then for the total capital projects, just find that real quick. Um, uh, let's see, that's one. Yeah, and then around uh, yeah, approximately, you know, a little less than forty million in uh, nonutility capital expenditures. Uh, so that's um, things like replacing some of our roads, our um, sidewalk replacement program and the community center expansion. Along with a few other things, we've got some bridges here in town that need to be replaced. And then uh, there's also the uh, enterprise funds, also known as utilities, that's uh, water, sewer and um. Stormwater, uh, so those services as well uh, are uh, wrapped up in the budgets. Uh, so I'd be happy to take any questions and try to field them as best I can. Um, yeah, so I couldn't quite finish compiling my notes on that before I came up. But, got the binder here, so hopefully I can field questions.
We'll tell you what, if you're okay, I'll do a quick round robin and see if there's any media questions, uh, Vice Chair Tisman, any questions?
Um, just, just curious, based off of my uh, reading of um. All the work uh, concerning the railroad museum, it has, has um. Let me rephrase, pardon me, uh, it, my understanding is that it'll be the gravel lot. Inclusive of uh, the parcel that Sahara Pizza is currently on and the, and the ca- and the cafe. Is that accurate, and if so?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and um. Are agreements already in place in terms of purchasing those parcels, or is that to, to be, to be done still?
That is my understanding.
That it, that is complete?
That is my understanding.
Okay, awesome, well.
Certain if the purchases have actually occurred yet.
Right, closing, but, okay. Well, that's awesome, thanks for the, for the hard work on that, bringing that to uh, fruition is gonna be huge for the city.
Well, staff, uh, getting that over the finish line as well, so congratulations to staff on their hard work there.
Hundred percent.
Good. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, nothing, I think uh, I have a, I have a twelve-year-old that's gonna be really excited about that uh, model train museum and probably asking to buy a lifetime membership and or work there. So, very exciting to see that come to fruition.
Yeah, very cool. Commissioner Crone?
I agree with the sentiments and, and just uh, thanks for the update, but no questions from my end.
Okay, Commissioner Murphy?
Uh, likewise, we're very excited um, for the, the new uh, museum, my kids, again, will be over the moon when they can uh, check it out for the first time, but no questions from me.
Excellent, excellent, and uh, I just have one, uh, the detailed budget um, will be in uh, it'll be published, we'll be able to look at it, right?
Yeah, yeah, if it is not on the website yet, it, I'm sure will be in short order.
Okay. Good, but no, I agree, it uh, it's pretty sad, we finally got that, got that underway.
Yeah.
Okay?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Uh, at this point, I move that we approve the minutes dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, as written, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those minutes are approved, now we move on to the historical design review requirements variants, I understand we have a. Advocate here?
Uh, yes, we have Andrew Levens online, our project manager, getting a brief uh, uh, overview of the staff memo.
Um, didn't we want to do the historic design review now?
Yeah, he's just gonna give you a quick overview of the, of the historic design review variants, yeah.
Good evening, staff members or commissioners. It's nice to be with you here virtually tonight, my name's Andrew Levens, I'm a land use planning consultant. Uh, helping process this application for a variance from the requirements of the Snoqualmie Historic District. Uh, Historic and Landmark District um, guidelines, so. Let me go ahead and share my screen. So uh, we have an applicant. That submitted an application for a variance from the requirements of the municipal code. The landmark district has an established palette of approved colors uh, to be used throughout downtown his- historic Snoqualmie. And that is starting on uh, page eight of your packet. You can see generally, these colors are pretty muted, contain a lot of earth tones um, and beiges. And then have some uh, optional accent colors that are. You typically utilized on storefront windows, as you can see, uh, this page is titled. So, in this case, uh, the applicant has requests, the applicant has requested a variance for a site located at eighty fifty Railroad Avenue. And this is the uh, Google Street View of that building. And uh, in this, they are requesting. A variance from the strict application of these approved colors. To use uh, these three colors, Lancaster whitewash, Odessa pink, and Van Buren brown. For their, to repaint that structure at eighty fifty Railroad Avenue. Uh, and the purpose. Staff's understanding that the purpose of this request is to make the exterior more complimentary to the intended use, which will be a candy store. So, the building is a non-contributing structure within the historic district and as such, the, there are. Comparatively uh, more lenient requirements for um. For this type of, or for structures generally that are not contributing within the uh, district. However, there are certain requirements um, that, and findings that must be made in order to approve a. Uh, variance request from the strict application of the historic district standards, so those uh, those findings. Uh, or the factors that the code directs the planning commission to take into consideration. Are the extent to which the project would adversely affect the character of the building or the overall historic district. The reasonableness of the proposed project in light of other alternatives available to achieve the objectives of the owner and the applicant. And the extent to which the proposed variance may be necessary to meet the requirements of a law or regulation such as the building code. Including the Washington State Barrier Free Regulations and the Model Toxic Control Act or Flood Hazard Regulations. So, uh, staff has reviewed this request. And that analysis is located on page six of the sta- of the planning commission packet. Uh, so in terms of. The extent to which the project would adversely affect the character of the building or the overall historic district. We believe that the proposed color scheme is um. In limited applications such as on one non-contributing building within the historic district. That it would not adversely affect the character of the building or the overall historic district. The three proposed colors, uh, of the three proposed colors, two are a muted uh. Brown and beige color, which are already consistent with the other colors that are in the approved palette. The only real difference is the Odessa pink, which um. Could be considered to be similar to a trim color that is uh, already in the approved palette. Um, potentially just utilized in a more limited application. Um, and just providing uh, an accent. Or an alternative to uh, what is found in the approved color palette. So, we did not see an issue with that. Uh, making that finding. The reasonableness of the proposed project in light of other alternatives available to achieve the objectives of the owner and the applicant. Uh. Based on the information provided by the applicant, um, which. Was that they would, they stated they would like the exterior of the building to complement their intended use. As a candy store, um, this makes sense, it's kind of evoking like. Uh, you know, it just evoke, it evokes that um, the pink evokes that. Use more perhaps than the other char- colors that are currently available in the approved color palette. So, it does appear that this uh, request is reasonable and is consistent with the objectives of the applicant. And then finally, the extent to which it's, the proposed variance is necessary to meet the requirements of a law. We did not see that this variance is um, required to be consistent with a law or regulation, but we also did not uh. Did not find any regulations that would conflict with um, with this request. So, overall, staff uh, believes the request appears consistent with these criteria specified. By the municipal code that would allow the planning commission to make a, to allow a uh, grant a variance request. And our recommendation is that the planning commission approve the variance request and. Adopt the findings that are listed on page seven of the agenda packet. So, the next steps um, af- once the planning commission has had the opportunity to discuss this. Uh, today, so be, as a category four application. Um. This request requires a public hearing, uh, so. Today, the planning commission may um. May discuss and provide feedback on the app- application, and then ultimately, the public hearing will be held in the future, right now, that's tentatively scheduled for October twenty-first. So, uh, with that, I'd just open the floor to any questions you may have and uh, encourage discussion or feedback. That could um, help inform the applicant for the public hearing on the twenty-first.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, scroll down to the colors in question. Yeah, I was gonna say that the top and bottom one look awful darn close to our. Uh, existing palette, maybe they just got a different name. And the middle one, even the middle one doesn't look that far off. So, um, do you, do you have the, the samples with you? Can we see them?
Uh, the, okay.
I just wanted to see if that. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, it's not, it's not a bright pink at all. Okay, okay, uh, here, thank you, thank you, but uh. Okay, so let me just do the, the quick round robin. Um, we're being uh, asked to, if we have any questions regarding this palette, uh, staff has recommended we approve it. Uh, Commissioner Kilcup, I see uh, you're drawing, let me note that Commissioner Kilcup is present, uh, any, any comments?
Hi, sorry I was late, for starters. Um, the only thing. I actually don't mind, and especially I zoomed out to look at like, what all these colors might look like together. Um, I think they play nicely, uh, I just wanted to confirm that the Odessa pink is limited to the door. Is that, cause that's how it's listed here, but I just.
We have our applicant in the audience, if we could.
Yeah, can we recognize, yeah, please? So, the question is, is the Odessa pink limited to the door?
Yes, oh, green button.
No, you can just make it the microphone.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Um. Further, the pink would just be used at the small, at the candy shop. And not at the adjacent uh, Wild Hair next door, it would just be an accent. Around the door and possibly the window to complement the pink candy, like um, there'll be like, big pink lights. To identify the candy shop, so it would be um, sort of. To invoke like a Neapolitan candy sort of look, but very muted and within a historical palette, very tasteful.
Okay. Commissioner Kukup? Answer your question, any further questions?
Yeah, I think the only thing, I mean, I, I hear that, I just wanna, I think I would like to clarify that it's limited to just those accents. Um, just because I don't want the whole building, you know, like, things happen and then plans change, and I don't wanna see a fully pink building.
Okay, so your, your question, we make that a provision of the uh, approval.
I guess so.
Okay.
But yes, that is correct, just uh, accents.
And you'd have no issue with that, right?
No wish, no, that's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, let me go, uh, Commissioner Murphy, any comments?
Uh, no comments, no, I think this is tasteful, reasonable, I think it like. Inject some fun into our downtown, um, and um. I think the, the color palette here kind of like, I don't know. Refreshes and kind of spruces up the streetscape a bit without it, again, you know, while keeping and conforming with the character of the, of the downtown. So, um, no questions, um, chair.
Good, good, okay, uh, Commissioner Crone?
I don't have any questions, I, I like the proposal, I think it's gonna look great when it's all done.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, no, no, no questions, I think uh. Appreciate the fact that we're having a public meeting to discuss this, just in case there's any sorts of questions or comments from. Neighboring businesses or others, so I think, you know, having that opportunity satisfies any, any concerns or questions I might have.
Okay, Vice Chair Tisman?
Just a couple of questions, um, if it was in the packet, I miss it, so I apologize if that's the case, uh, but for clarity. When we look at the Lancaster whitewash, is my understanding accurate? Yeah, and, and actually, do you mind going back to the Googler? Uh, or maps, yeah. Um, thank you so much, and that color isn't, it will, will be painted across both storefronts, both the. Future candy shop and the Wild Hair, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, the Lancaster whitewash will be painted, that's gonna be the, all, the upper portion, including the apartment up above. Just to make that disappear a little bit more.
Yeah.
And then, I also should have mentioned, the awning is gonna be cleaned up. And then the Lanca- the Lancaster whitewash is going to be. The majority of, that's gonna be the Wild Hair with the Van Buren Brown as the trim. And then, we'd like on ours, just to differentiate the, you know, the two doors. Um, we'd like to continue a stripe, so we could do the Lancaster whitewash and the Van Buren Brown, and then just a hint of the, this, of the Odessa pink just right around the door.
Gotcha, and, and, and that was a question I had, um, so when you talk about the awning. Um, are you going to just do n- new shingle, or what's the plan for that? I, I know it's outside of the color discussion, but just curious.
Yeah, we are too, that's actually the landlord, uh, or, our landlord, Mike Kirkland, is handling that part of it.
Gotcha, okay, and then, um, I think the only other question, thank you so much, the only other question I had was. Uh, what is the intent for the mural on the Mexican restaurant side?
Nothing.
No change?
We, we, no.
Okay, so that wouldn't get painted with uh, Lancaster whitewash? Okay.
No, I, no, I don't believe there's any.
Is that still a contract with the city, is that mural in particular, so that would not be?
We have our um, community liaison, Nicole Weeby, online, um, she might be able to answer that question.
Hi, um, that mural was part of the centennial celebration for um, the city of Snoqualmie and. Um, so it's on the building that Mike Kirkland owns, the, the pa- uh, the mural was painted with um, arts commission funds as well as community donations. So at this point, there is no conversation or plan to uh, repaint that mural.
Okay, the mural stays in place?
That's correct, there's, nothing is changing with the mural.
Okay, thank you so much. And that's all I have, chair, thank you.
Thank you, uh, likewise, I think uh, this is tasteful and will spruce up downtown, so, yes, and uh, thank you for the color palette.
Thank you, commissioners.
Actually, it looks. More muted than it does on the screen, so thank you. Okay, at this point, I move that we approve. The planning commission gives its approval of the color palette as presented, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move forward to the next step. Thank you. At this point. Move on to the historic downtown retail district overlay code amendments.
Thank you, I will be walking us through this uh, again, um. And my name is Andrew Levens, I'm a land use planning consultant, helping with the process, these code application, these code amendments. Uh, so just to recap, uh, originally, we had started out. Um, with the Economic Development Commission had sent a letter to the Community Development. Council Committee. Um, regarding retail, retail uses and waivers from retail uses in the downtown historic district within Snoqualmie. Originally, the, their recommendations included increasing the requirement from seventy-five percent to a hundred percent for. Uh, ground floor tenant spaces. And increasing the time allowance on a good faith effort to uh, lease to a bona fide retail use. From a hundred and twenty days to a hundred and eighty days. Throughout the course of the discussions that the planning commission has had, based on. Uh, public outreach that the city has conducted, uh, as well as ongoing deliberations by the commission. Uh, staff has updated the most recent iteration of the strike through language located in this packet. To uh, remove the waiver process altogether, uh, as directed by the planning commission. And um, so here you can see in our proposed retail use. There's no longer a time allowance to demonstrate a good at faith effort to find a retail tenant. Because uh, this code amendment would. Uh, require that once ninety percent of, once less than ninety percent of the retail uses within the designated areas. Uh, are bona fide retail uses, it would, it would require that the space remain vacant until a qualifying retail use can be found. Or the balance of the ratio changes such that um, ninety percent or more of the uses are retail in the district. And so, uh, the, and the other. Um, major change was just since, um, well, it was included in the previous strike through as well. But it was the expansion of the BR one, the his- the, with, excuse me, I'm tripping over my words. It was the expansion of the applicability of the retail use requirement to incorporate all parcels zone BR one and BR two in downtown Snoqualmie. Uh, within the retail district, and so. The uh, so in summary. The ex- these amendments would expand the extent of the retail overlay zone to the BR one and the BR two zone downtown Snoqualmie. It would remove the parcels currently zoned, uh, OS two from the retail overlay zone, because those are being incorporated into a city parks project. It would increase the ground floor retail use requirement from seventy-five percent to ninety percent. It would remove the retail waiver process from the municipal code altogether. It would apply the ninety percent ground floor retail use requirement to storefronts facing Center Boulevard into, in Snoqualmie Ridge. And it would require that no more than fifty percent of the ground floor windows of a tenant space. Be covered for storefronts facing Center Boulevard Southeast in Snoqualmie Ridge, in order to preserve and facilitate pedestrian interest. So, the next steps for these amendments, if um, and I. Maybe we should walk through the, the language that's being proposed before, I guess we discuss that.
Wait a minute, before you do that, and I just wanna say that, summary, good. Um, basically, what we're trying to do is, again, preserve the soul of Snoqualmie, so we don't have. When we lost Anis and had that medical on the ridge, we don't have that, you know. Take over uh, our little city and we preserve the soul, so I think this summary points, based on the uh, guardrails we have. Um, captures that and does what we want it to do, a ten thousand feet, so I appreciate that. And the work it took to get this put together.
Thank you, yeah, we appreciate uh, all the direction uh, that the planning commission has provided so far to get us to this point. And so the major changes um, that we're going to see in this strike through here are uh. We are now removing this kind of lengthy description, verbal description of the extents of the boundary of the retail zone. The retail overlay zone, and we're going to depict it on the official zoning map, um. Because we're expanding it, it was just getting to the point that a verbal description was no longer practical. Um, these are the changes that are revising the ground floor use requirement to ninety percent in the downtown historic retail overlay zone. Um, and it also is exempting. City occupied buildings within that area, as well as um, some of the supportive. And transition, transitional and emergency housing uses that are required to be allowed by state law, so we can't really regulate that. Um, so that is also being exempted. And then, this uh, was the most substantial modification to the municipal code, it's basically striking. It's basically striking through the entire waiver of special use regulations. Um, so that process by which the planning commission could evaluate a waiver application and then the hearing examiner. Uh, there was discussion about having the hearing examiner being the appeal body. Uh, that has all been removed and there is no longer an opportunity for um, for waivers to be requested from these requirements. They'll be applicable to every every space in downtown Snoqualmie and on Snoqualmie Ridge. Basically, with no other with no other alternative, and that's in order to preserve the uh, pedestrian nature of these areas as well as uh, the retail uses that are the city desires um, or believes appropriate to locate there. And these are the changes to the Snoqualmie Ridge development standards, nothing too major here. We've just removed a reference to the waiver waiver process in the uh, main body of the municipal code. And then this change has been in there a while. It's the fifty percent ground floor uh, opacity requirement for for uh, windows on Snoqualmie Ridge. And just walking through the rest of the packet, the black line right now is the current extent here, this orange and orange polygon with a white outline is the extent of the BR one and the BR two zone uh, currently in Snoqualmie. And it would be the extent of, it's the proposed extent of the retail overlay zone. The same thing here, black black um, outline is the current extent. The orange with white outline is the proposed extent for all ground floor tenant spaces on Snoqualmie Ridge. And then this was, I believe some of the commissioners were um, not able to make um, the um, meetings where this was initially discussed, so I'll just summarize it now. There was some direction by the planning commission to combine the BR one and the BR two zones in the zoning code. But after evaluating that change, um, there are just a number of uses such as banks or dry cleaners that uh, are appropriate in the BR two zone. But that if we combine them, it would create land, it would create conflicts between the two uh, the twos, co- conflicts that would require resolution um, and maybe not achieve the intent of what we're trying to do because uh, banks and dry cleaners and other uh, commercial services like that um, may maybe appropriate in this area, just not within the core of the downtown historic zone, downtown downtown historic district. So we opted to propose to keep both zones, but just um, create an overlay zone, expand the overlay zone to encompass both of them within downtown Snoqualmie. And that is uh, that's a summary of the discussion. I'm happy to take any questions or run back over anything that we need to.
Well, again, thank you for summarizing that. It's been many months in the making. Uh, at ten thousand feet, we wanted to preserve uh, the soul of Snoqualmie. But we also uh, originally had proposed, I mean, just to remind everybody that the waiver process go to the elected officials and legally, apparently, we can't do that. So in order to make it such that somebody would have to propose a different code amendment, we we said just make it so there is no waiver process. I really appreciate staff working with that and putting this together. At this point, I'd like to do the round robin. I'll do it uh, in backwards order I've got here uh, with the commissioners and just see if there's any comments for clarification or questions um, or opinions. Commissioner Murphy?
Um, thanks, Chair. No, I echo um, your comments and appreciate all the work done. I feel like we resolved a lot in the last meeting uh, when we tackled the issue of the waiver. And really, to to your point, um, doing all we can to preserve Snoqualmie's kind of downtown core and prioritizing those retail uses. Um, you know, looking how far kind of that, this kind of downtown area has come over the years. And it's a different downtown than it was five, ten, fifteen years ago. Um, and wanting to preserve some of what is really making um, making our our city unique. So no, I have no, no kind of like, you know, objections or kind of clarifying. I feel like we kind of hammered uh, hammered that out really well last time. Um, I think we did a nice job kind of um, striking the waiver um, element and component there. And um, yeah, that's that's kind of all I have. So no, kind of, just a couple of comments, but no substantive changes, Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. Commissioner Crone?
No comments. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kilkup?
Uh, no, I actually really appreciate going back through all of this again and the additional changes that were made um, in the last meeting. Um, it looks really good. I feel really good about that.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Probably gonna start to sound like a broken record, but yeah, I agree.
Good. Commissioner Tesman? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Tesman?
If Fisher Kilkup is good with the fifty percent transparency, then uh, I'm happy with the whole thing. So uh, it's good to see it come come to an end.
Excellent, excellent. Again, compliments to the staff and Andrew. I really appreciate you putting this together because we know um, we kind of overhauled a little bit more than we uh, initially bit off. So I really appreciate that. And yeah, let's let's move forward to the next steps. So at uh, this point, I move that we approve the historic downtown retail district overlay code amendments uh, as presented today. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's great news. Uh, there's just one more um, aspect of this that maybe I'm not sure if Director Arteche was going to um, uh, bring it up associated with this item, but just kind of as a procedural um, as a procedural item, I'm not seeing it in here. Uh, Director Arteche, the resolution of intent to study the amendment, is that something that uh, the commission will need to discuss now? Or will that be covered at the public hearing on the twenty first?
Um, thank you for bringing that up. I I did send the resolution of intention to the chair for his signature. Um, it's something that we could do anytime during this process, but certainly before the process ends and we're well within that timeframe. I think the other next step, Andrew, if you'd like to mention about proceeding forward with a public hearing um, for the downtown uh, historic district retail overlay amendments?
Uh, sure. So we will, staff will uh, move forward with noticing these proposed text amendments. As part of this effort, we have reached out to um, various merchant groups, property owners um, throughout the process to gather feedback. Uh, because the public hearing will kind of be the uh, one of the last opportunities for input on these proposed changes before it goes to the city council. Uh, we are suggesting noticing, sending out notice to the property owners who are now going to be affected by the expansion of the retail overlay zone, just in order to be consistent and make sure we are providing an opportunity for all the voices that will be impacted by this change to be heard. Uh, so because the planning commission has approved, uh, made a motion to approve this iteration, the next step will be uh, a public hearing that we are tentatively scheduling for October twenty first. And we will move forward with uh, issuing that notice this week.
Great, thank you so much.
Good. Okay, at this point, uh, move on to uh, next agenda item, which is uh, items of planning commissioner interest. This point, we just go do a round robin and see if there's any other uh, items to bring up to staff. So let's start again with uh, Commissioner Murphy? Any items for staff?
Um, no, nothing uh, from me this week.
Okay.
Sure.
Commissioner Crone?
I don't have anything either. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kilkup?
I will share that um, on Saturday, I went to the tree planting with the uh, forestry. I'm not sure exactly the right title. Anyways, um, I just wanted to comment on what a wonderful job they I've gone to lots of different events like that where you have like low skill labor and there's a lot of standing around and wondering why you're there because you're not being helpful at all. And everything was organized and ready to go. They did a really great presentation that explained to me why I kill most plants that I plant. Um, so big win for me. Um, they had all the tools. Anyways, it was really beautiful. And I feel like in under an hour, we planted about a hundred trees. So it's just a, you know, I just want to give that kudos because I've been to a lot of situations where that's not done so well, and it was just wonderfully done.
Excellent. Yeah, that's great. Anything else, Commissioner Kilkup?
No, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Hmm, nothing that I can think of right now, at least not planning related.
Okay, Vice Chair Tesman?
Nothing for me tonight, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, then let's move on to the uh, oh, and I have I have no additional items. I think we're finally getting a subtraction here. Um, upcoming schedule, future agenda list and work program. And I understand you wanted to give us a couple of slides on climate change during this?
Yeah, I'm just um, showing you, um, the future agenda list gives you an indication of where we've been, where we're at and where we're going. Um, for tonight, we've actually added um, climate change committee. We have our project manager, Chris Green, online to give a brief update on where we're at with climate change uh, in consideration of forming a climate change committee. Chris, are you there?
Yeah, thank you. So um, I have a very quick kind of presentation update on um, the climate element planning. I'll share my screen here. Let's see. Sorry, just a moment.
How's it going, Chris?
Good, sorry, I'm uh, not used to Zoom as much, so I think I figured it out, sorry. Oh.
I can bring it up, Chris, if you, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that might be.
Oh, there you go.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, so just a very quick update. Um, so we talked in June about the overall
I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself to the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Um, I'm Chris Green. I'm a planning manager with OTAC. So a consultant helping uh, manage the development of the climate element as part of the comprehensive plan for city of Snoqualmie.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so just kind of going through quickly, kind of a recap type overview. And then I wanted to talk about their climate um, planning advisory team, um, which is the advisory committee that will kind of guide the process. Um, so a quick overview of the project again. Um, really kind of big picture, there's two components to the new element that's being developed that I wanted to emphasize this again, that there's these two objectives. One is really adaptation, so living with the results of climate change and making city of Snoqualmie more uh, resilient in the way that it responds to those changes. Uh, and then mitigation is actually reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Um, these translate pretty directly to House Bill eleven eighty-one, which is the what introduced this requirement. Um, there's two sub elements that will go in this uh, climate element itself. So there's a resilience one. So this is that focus on adaptation. Um, looking at community assets, um, impacts to those assets from um, climate change and then hazards as well. Uh, and then greenhouse gas emissions reduction. Um, so inventorying and um, setting targets and strategies to reduce uh, emissions uh, per capita vehicle miles traveled is specifically called out as one of the requirements. And that tends to be um, in most jurisdictions, the big one. Um, especially, this is really looking at the overall kind of community emissions from things like development and different sectors in the community, not strictly like the operations of the city government. So some, some plans tend to really focus on like the city's operations. Um, that's not really this, what the state is requiring here. Um, so community engagement is a big piece of this. And a technical and then community advisory committee uh, is a pretty big piece of that puzzle. Um, the other pieces you see here, so a lot of them are kind of general outreach. Um, planning commission itself plays a pretty large role, especially as a draft element starts to be developed. Um, but throughout the process, there's this advisory committee. Um, and guidance from Washington Department of Commerce on how to carry out this process. They call it the Climate Policy Advisory Team. Um, but Climate Planning Advisory Team sounds a little more proactive on this one. Uh, but we get to keep the same acronym. Um, so a little bit about what this committee entails and what it what it will do. Um, so there's kind of two pieces of it. You know, some places like larger jurisdictions maybe set this up as two committees, sometimes where there's a technical committee of um, different city staff representatives and experts from other agencies. Um, and then there's a community advisory committee. Um, we felt like it was probably best in terms of just volunteer capacity and kind of getting the more conversation between those two groups to combine those roles um, into one. So um, this would be a committee that um, has experts both with from within the city and outside of the city. Um, and then stakeholders from the community, representatives um, of uh, different groups and people that may be implementing some of the changes. Um, and then also a big part of this is engaging the community and promoting participation from the larger community and really kind of helping um, get the word out and and have people understand and engage with the process. Um, there's six meetings that we've outlined that are sort of key milestones where this committee would be reviewing different aspects of the plan. The first one coming up very soon, October twenty fourth is is more of a kickoff and then looking at climate related hazards and um, confirming some of that community engagement approach and making sure that that's um, coordinated. And then it starts to get into really reviewing some of the work of the project. So uh, the community assets that have been identified, those hazards by sector and what the potential impacts are. Um, going into January, auditing plans and policies to see what city of Snoqualmie already has and maybe what needs to change. Um, starting to look at the results of the greenhouse gas inventory and then setting targets for greenhouse gas emissions reduction and setting priorities of impacts to really address with resiliency is the the March topic. And then, as you can see in April and May, it gets into actual draft policies and implementation. So really fine tuning the the finished product. So that would be that would be um, kind of the range of topics. kind of the range of topics. Kind of a very big overview that this committee would be working on. So I wanted to open it up for questions or discussion. I went through that pretty quickly, I know, about.
It sounds, it sounds like you're asking for a volunteer to be a member of the advisory committee.
That's my next slide. Yeah, oops. Yeah. So, yeah, so the Planning Commission, it would be pretty important to have a member on the advisory committee to kind of serve as that link between the Planning Commission and some of that work and also have some expertise in some of the land use issues and development issues of the community and can bring those, bring that knowledge into the process. And so that was my, that was, that was a well anticipated that that was the
What was?
Next step.
Could you go back to the, the meeting dates?
Yes.
Okay. So just right off the top, is there some planning commissioner would like to throw their hat in the ring at this point? Commissioner Testman?
I would love to.
Okay, excellent. Excellent. That, that'll work. And so what, what's required to attend these meetings?
Uh, yes. Yep, that's.
No, I mean, are they Zoom meetings and person meetings? What are they?
Uh, yeah, they'll be, these will all be virtual. So yeah, it's
Excellent.
Online meetings and the first one we have scheduled for five PM. And so at that time continues to work well, we'll probably do this, you know, early evening, very late afternoon and a timeframe.
Well, we're real happy to have Commissioner Testman. That'll work. Just out of curiosity, anybody else want to volunteer? Okay, then Commissioner Testman, you're it. So you'll be our liaison. Maybe we'll add an agenda item for future planning commission meetings that you could, after these meetings, kind of tell us what you guys are wrestling with.
Great. Thanks for the opportunity.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you for that, having me at the meeting and thank you, Commissioner Testman. We're looking forward to working with you on the committee.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Very good. So Commissioner Testman is right. I'll need to do a formal motion on that, right? He's good. Okay. Thank you, Chris. At this point, anything left for the work program?
It's included in the packet consistently. Happy to answer any questions, but don't, don't need to go into a presentation on it either.
Okay. No, no, fair enough. And I may have mentioned this before, but twenty twenty-five, are we going to get into the mill site or?
Could be.
Because that's still out there.
Could be. Yeah. I have not heard of a, of a, of a, of a fine timeline yet.
Okay, all right. It's been in the wings since twenty fifteen from my observation, but okay, okay. All right. If there's nothing else from the commissioners, I move that we go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-eight. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.